If we can reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss a tenure-related matter, a student issue, and a contractual issue. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Robert Teigen.
Meredith Moriarty.
John Walston.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Delenbach.
Christine Beppe.
Lila Bear.
Catherine Maddow.
John McPhillips.
I am guessing that we have some PIG students joining us in the audience tonight. Thanks for coming. Your obligation is to be here until nine o'clock or when the meeting is over, whichever one comes first. And we have sign-out sheets that are kind of scattered around the board table. When it's time to go, make sure you sign out so that you get credit for being here. First on the agenda is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the February 15, 2023 regular board meeting.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item three, our meeting reports. First is our superintendent's report.
Sure. Thank you. I just wanted to let the board know that we did send the pre-K RFP out again this year. And anyone who's interested in that, the RFPs are due back to the district by March 17 for review. I also wanted to provide a few thanks. So Monday, when we returned from break, the middle school had a little outing that was unexpected. The building actually had to be evacuated because of an exhaust fan, which created some smoke, and the fire alarm was activated. So in a relatively short period of time, we had a lot of first responders there. The middle school students and staff walked to St. Thomas because of the cold temperatures. And then our transportation department were able to send buses to the middle school after elementary dismissal. What impressed me about this was this could have been a really long event. And because of the work of the first responders, our O&amp;M staff, transportation, really, the students were able to get back into the middle school very quickly. So I just wanted to thank all of the staff, first responders, St. Thomas, who were able to really quickly move and get kids in a safe place. So it was, you know, we practice drills all the time. We talk about having our safety plans. And it's things like this that you really put those to the test. And I think everyone just did a great job. So I'd like to commend everyone who was involved in that.
And I would add on to that, a thanks to the staff that I heard provided the coats off of their backs sometimes to the students that, even though it is February, or was February, were wearing short sleeves to school.
Yes. Well, yeah, it's warm out. Yeah, everyone did a great job. So I just, I thought that was important to share. I'd also like to, we have some winter sports teams who are still playing. We have our hockey team who is playing Saturday night in the Section Two Championship, I believe.
Regional?
Regional here, I believe. And our girls' basketball team is playing Friday night for the sectional finals at HBCC at 7:30, I believe. So we will make sure that when the season is wrapped up, we'll have our winter athletes come to the board meeting for some recognition. So they've had some really great seasons and appropriate for our presentation this evening. So that's my report.
Any questions for Jody? Next up is our board report. First, I just wanted to say a thank you to the Elsmere PTA that organized a celebration at Elsmere of their, their blue ribbon. Meredith and I attended that yesterday. I'm actually still carrying my blue ribbon around with me. I wanted to remind the board that the high school, the lab school, Brooks Barbecue is taking place on Saturday from March 4th, on March 4th, from 3:30 to 6:00. If you didn't preorder a meal, but you would still like one, you're not out of luck. There, I'm told there are limited day-of-sale meals available. Next, everybody should have received an email from NISBA with a link to an electronic resolutions survey that came in today. The survey gauges member sentiment on a variety of different advocacy issues, including some that would affect whether NISBA suggests continuing some expiring or sunsetting provisions that the organization has taken in the past. And everything will get considered for the resolutions packet for the annual vote on the resolutions. So if you can, please take a minute to complete it. I believe the deadline is March 22. And then lastly, everyone should have seen an invitation to attend the BOSI's annual meeting and dinner on March 29. You need to RSVP by March 3 if you would like to do that. In connection with the dinner, there is a one-hour tour of their new facility. And then the annual meeting with a presentation of the BOSI's budget, followed by dinner prepared by the BOSI's culinary students. So if anybody is interested in attending that, again, the RSVP is due by March 3. That's all I have. I don't know if anybody else has anything else for the board report. Okay. I don't believe we have any committee reports. So do we have anybody here from the Student Senate?
Yeah, so I'm Henry from the Student Senate. And we've had a pretty uneventful last two weeks. We mostly discussed in our meeting today how to best prepare and advertise for the Eagle Challenge led by Mr. Walston in, in May, I believe, right? So we're, April, sorry. Yeah, so we're, we're creating Instagram accounts to promote that. We're doing our best to try to get everyone in the school ready for it. We're doling out volunteering positions inside the Student Senate to manage kind of the regularities of that program. So we're all really looking forward to that. And yeah, that's pretty much our main focus for the next month or two. Yeah, thanks.
Great. Thank you. Do we have anybody here from the middle school student council?
Hi, I'm Reagan. I'm an eighth grader, and I'm here to provide a middle school update. We hope to have our eighth grade snowflake dance this Friday night, but we will know this will depend on whether or not we have a snowstorm. And if it needs to be rescheduled, Mr. Bixby will send out communications to all eighth graders and parents. Our March Madness spirit days are back and include a pajama day, a greenout, a beach day, and some other ways to have fun during our month of March. Our choir festival is coming soon on March 16, and we are excited for this opportunity to come back. This year's festival for the choir, and we narrowly missed the last festival, which was also for the choir students, but was canceled less than two weeks prior to its date because of the start of the pandemic. Spring sports are coming soon. And we remind all students and parents that our start date is later this month, on March 13 for high school-level sports, and March 27 for modified sports. And we would also like to congratulate BCMS, BCMS student Jude McLalain for their design of Black History Month this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our presentation. And we are continuing with our 2023-2024 budget presentations, this evening focusing on athletics and operations and maintenance. But first, I think we have a little overview by John McPhillips.
Good evening. I know that we have a robust agenda tonight for athletics, operations, and maintenance and transportation, part two. But I thought it'd be helpful for the board and the public at large just to give a quick, brief summary of some of the items that we talked about at the last board meeting. Again, I think it's always important to sort of bring together both the budget facts and figures with the core mission statement and principles of the Bethlehem Central School District. And what you will hear tonight from operations and maintenance, athletics, and transportation is how those individual service areas sort of bring to fruition these So I'd like to sort of start off with a summary of the budget revenues. The school taxes, at least presently reflected in this chart, references 0% tax increase at roughly $69.2 million. As a reminder, the tax cap legislation allows for a 3.07% increase, which would roughly be $2.1 million. Pilot payments are at $3.8 million and currently include the 3.4 PSEG pilot, which is slated to end in 2425. So 2324, which is the budget presently in front of you, is the last year for the PSEG pilot. State aid at $30.4 million represents roughly an increase of $2.4 million or 8.6%. And is a, is the last year of the rollout of bringing state aid to its full level. What that figure does not include is the 1.2 million, it's $1,269,000 associated with universal pre-K or $275,000, $275,000 associated with high-impact tutoring. Some miscellaneous other revenue streams, which saw a nominal increase to, from last year, brings roughly total revenues to $105.2 million, roughly a 2.4% increase. Next chart sort of shows a summary by program area and the dates in which the business office would present to the board. On the 15th of February, we spoke about some of the administrative areas of the budget, transportation, technology, fringe benefits, and debt service. Roughly $105.9 million in total for 2223, I'm sorry, for 2324 is proposed. And tonight, you'll hear a little bit more information and the facts and figures behind operations and maintenance and athletics. At the end of our meeting on the 15th, this is where things stood. Revenues at roughly $105.2 million, expenditures at roughly $105.9. The initial gap from 22 to 23, to 23 and 24 was roughly $720,000. And during the presentations on the 15th, individual divisions had requested the board to consider $616,000 in increases above the 2223 budget. Overall, that represents a year-to-year increase, at least presently, of $1.3 million and would equate to a 1.9% tax increase, which again, is below the property tax cap of 3.07%. The budget in front of you presently does not include any use of fund balance or reserves. The fund balance still would remain at the 4% maximum threshold. And that's sort of where we had left off on, on summary as of the 15th. Before we hand off to, I think athletics is next with Mr. Keys, is there any quick questions on the summary side of the budget? I can address those at the end as well.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Damn tall people. No, I want to thank, I want to thank the board for always their continued support. As, as Jody mentioned, it's been another great year, and our teams are obviously thriving. And it's because of the support from the board and our community. Our first slide, sorry, I always walk away. That just gives you an idea of the breadth and depth of our athletic program. We have a very large program, broken into, of course, the varsity JV. Freshmen is kind of being phased out and into more of a modified nine, so there are only three freshman levels. And of course, our two unified teams, which are basketball and bowling. Probably in two years, we'll be looking to add a unified track and field is what's kind of on the horizon there. So just kind of dollars to dollars, these are the main areas of our, of our athletics operational budget. We're looking at a, at a slight increase under our coaches, chaperones, our athletic trainer. Those are our contractual increases in salary. Our equipment stays static at the $5,000 mark. We are seeing increases in our officials' dues, which is also contractual with Section Two's officials' associations. That also includes our police. And the other you'll see kind of broken down on the next slide would be, you know, lifeguard, the ice rink at the YMCA. The last piece, and you'll see a significant, significant increase from 106 to 1376, is BOSI's uniforms. But really, the, the main increase there is a $20,000 increase in supplies, which is directly attributed to a much higher participation rate. We had a 33% increase in our football program. We are in need of helmets and shoulder pads. Football is a non-cut sport, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on that. But as an example, for our middle schoolers, our seventh and eighth graders, this past fall, we had 76 football players on there, which is an amazing, awesome challenge, but a great thing, because the future is going to be, be bright for our programs. So you see overall, we're looking at a 72,834 increase. When you see BOSI's on there, that is Schedule Galaxy, which is our, our scheduling system, and also our huddle cameras that we have in Gym B, as well as the stadium field. Once the turf field is, is completed, then there'll be a huddle camera there as well. So this breaks down the other program expenditures that I alluded to, our officials' fees, the YMCA rental entry fees, that's across the board, wrestling, cheerleading, cross-country, track and field, all of our entry fees, gymnastics, our lifeguarding fees for our two pools, both at the middle school and the high school, security for Bethlehem Police. We have them at all-night events, varsity football, varsity boys', and varsity girls' basketball, and ice hockey. And then equipment reconditioning, we're looking at about a $1,500 increase there. Again, it is a mandate for all of our football helmets to be sent into a reconditioner for safety purposes. Obviously, more helmets means more reconditioning. Gives you just an overall idea, again, of the depth and breadth, size of our program. We have 16 girls, 15 boys, three co-ed. And we're looking at, in total, just about 110 coaches total. And there's, you see the breakdown of our teams in the fall, winter, and spring. So we're looking at a few additions this year. So I alluded to our 78 athletes, the modified level. We did add a third coach, and I appreciate your support last year in helping us add that extra coach. Now, as I mentioned, we had in the mid to upper 70s. That is not a, a rate that's helpful for instructional at that young level. So we are looking to have a seventh, and now an eighth-grade team. We would be adding one coach, because we had three coaches with our one seventh, eighth-grade team, so one would be sliding over to coach with the second coach. So we'd have two coaches on seventh grade, two coaches on eighth grade. And that $4,255 cost is a step-one modified-level football assistant and roughly four local bus transportations. Our travel expenses, you see NISBA championships. That is for all of our teams. And, and it's, again, another wonderful problem, but not really a problem, it's a great thing. But there's an expense associated with our teams routinely going deep into state championships. This past fall, I had the privilege of joining our girls' tennis program as they went to Flushing Metals and the USTA Center. Last spring, our boys have. Our girls also went the very first year. Our hockey team is one win away from going to Buffalo in a couple of weeks. Gymnastics, cross-country, girls' swim, boys' swim. This section no longer covers those costs. They do reimburse us at a fraction, and it's kind of a floating fraction. It is generally no more than 15%, 18%. And then when we do get reimbursed, that goes into the district's general fund, not the athletics budget. So we are looking for a $20,000 increase there just to handle the expenses associated with charter buses, hotels, mileage for our coaches. And then the field rental costs, obviously, we're embarking on a major project, kind of a security blanket. Fall is our busiest time of the year. You saw the, the number of teams, 33 teams in the fall. Many of them use our high school fields, Field Two, the fence field, that will be the synthetic field. So just in case, we need field rentals. In total, that's $29,255, the additions. Any questions? Thank you.
Oh, hold on one second. Meredith, did you have a question?
Um, yes, sorry. You mentioned that football is a non-cut sport. And I was thinking specifically about some other sports that go right from modified to varsity. I was thinking specifically about swimming, but I don't know if there's others as well. And I understood that there was cuts to the modified swim team. And I was wondering if it's possible to have a JV swim level so that there wouldn't be the cuts at the modified level?
Unfortunately, our league, the suburban council, does not have JV swim. So we would need opponents, and that would be the issue. It's kind of why right now, currently, we don't have modified tennis. We're ready, willing, and able, but we have nobody to play. So we have to wait. At least the league is, is getting us there. What we could do, and it's something I could certainly have a conversation with Coach Bannas, who's coached our modified team for years, if she believes that we have the numbers, and of course, schedule-wise for pools, which is always a challenge, we could always look at, you know, the potential of a, of a second modified swim team.
Okay, yeah. Just because, you know, modified, I appreciate that there are kids who haven't had the opportunity to get up to, to that level yet. And I think modified is a wonderful place for kids to enter into a sport. And I would hope that we would have enough spots for kids, you know, who haven't had as many opportunities to, to compete earlier before modified. And then your, your answer is probably the same, but I, I know that some local schools have started girls' wrestling teams. I know Mistuna, Schenectady have a joint team. And there are now, you know, I heard about a lot of great girls' wrestling matches going on around the area. Is that something we've explored, the girls' wrestling?
I've had conversations with Coach Braga, our varsity coach, and also our, our kid wrestling program to see, and we do have young ladies. We are putting out a survey, a Google survey, early spring, probably early April, to kind of gauge that, as well as female ice hockey, which has started up in the Adirondack area. There seems to be a little bit more traction, quite honestly, with the girls' hockey. I've received seven, eight emails from residents, parents whose daughters are seventh, eighth, ninth graders, excited about that. It's been a, brought up on our league agendas, and we have, a lot of the local districts are interested. That would be a merged team. That usually is a two, three-year process. You know, ice time, as we're discovering, trying to find a, a good time for our game on Saturday. Ice time is really a challenge. And, but I'm pretty confident that's going to be one that we're going to be able to have. And I think the wrestling, if the numbers are there, it'll, it'll be something that we can do.
Okay, great. As long as we're exploring those avenues and finding out interest. Thank you.
Catherine?
Um, two questions. I'm sorry. For, for those of us who have not gone down the school sports path yet, what does it mean to have a no-cut team? Is that like literally, like nobody?
Literally no cuts. So right now, yep, in the suburban council, cross-country is a no-cut indoor track and field, outdoor track and field, and football are no-cut sports.
So anybody who walks out and wants to play is on the team?
Shows up, you know, and fulfills all the responsibilities is welcome to be there. Yep.
And is that at the modified, was that just at the modified level for, for those sports or all the way through?
All the way through.
Oh, interesting. Is there a short answer as to why some and not others?
Yes. Basically, we can break down the running sports into different heats, scoring and non-scoring. For football, it's a depth sport. You want to have numbers. You get injuries. Often, we'll start out with larger numbers, never in the 70s, normally in the low 40s. And then by the time they come up to JV varsity, it's dwindled down to upper 20s, 30s. So our coaching staff, myself, were excited because if we're starting out in the 70s, maybe well 50, you know, by the time. So really, depth. And then as far as the running programs, all three seasons, there are tiered scoring, non-scoring. And it's a good opportunity for kids who are, you know, want to just be active.
Thank you. I had no idea. I really appreciate that. And then one question you pointed out, we've got three volunteer coaches, or excuse me, five volunteer coaches, and 98 coaches total. How do we determine who, which boards are volunteer, which boards are paid? How does that work?
Well, we have, so we have our, our, our regular appointed, well, everybody's appointed, but our budgeted coaches. There will be some programs that have varsity assistants. Some programs will have a person who has an expertise, has experience, but they don't want to make the commitment of being here five, six days a week. So, but they, they offer some expertise, so they might be here a couple of days a week, and, you know, we're not going to pay them because fulfilling the hours. Sometimes just an extra set of hands, you know, someone who's excited about learning how to coach, but hasn't really done it yet.
So I'm not hearing these are like people who would like to be paid staff, but are, what I'm hearing is these are people who are filling different roles?
Correct.
Cool. And then my last question is, the $20,000 ad for travel is, is listed as an ad. How do we pay for that before? Like, what if, why is, I guess, just some background on?
So it's a relatively, it's a relatively new expense, because up until recently, Section Two was covering hotels, was covering charter buses. Once the pandemic hit, and, and as Karen knows, the shortage of drivers, charter rates have skyrocketed. Section Two is not operating at a, at a, at a profit right now, so they needed to scale back. Many of the sections, New York State has broken up into 11 sections, where Section Two have, have now abandoned paying for their representatives at state-level tournaments. So more and more of that onus has been put on school districts, I'd say, over the last couple of years. And each, for the last couple of years, they've scaled back more and more. So now that, you know, of course, we're never going to tell our, our athletes who've reached a state semifinal or state championship, no, we're not going to support you. So in order for us to make sure that we don't have a shortfall, you know, up until now, the last couple of times, I've, I've gone through Jody, and, and we've found other places for it. But we don't want to have to rely on that.
Are other districts absorbing the costs or are parents?
Everyone is.
But I mean, like, is this, I could also see a world in which the, the booster clubs are boost, I mean, they already boost, but they're boosting more or what have you. Is, is there, are, are districts typically absorbing the entirety of the costs, or are they looking to communities to participate in that as well?
You'll find a mix. It's like anything else. I'll tell you right now, half of the hockey teams in the Catholic District High School Hockey League, parents pay to play, which is not really allowed, but it, it happens, where rinks are paid for by parents. Our district supports our program that we sanction, that we, that we sponsor, rather. And so you're going to find that's different.
Got it.
Our boosters still, still support us, but I think at the end of the day, hotels and charter buses are, are, should be covered if we can. Meals and things of that nature when they are down there, that's often covered by boosters. I've, I've, over the years, have traveled with our teams that have made, made it to those levels. I can think of girls' soccer a couple of years ago, going to Courtland's, and the boosters paid for, big dinner, you know, and breakfasts and things of that nature.
Thank you.
I think it's just the changing landscape of, of the economics of the section.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Christine, do you have a question?
I just had two questions, but to comment on yours. Boosters, it's an ebb and flow, depending on how strong our budget is. So sometimes when we don't have the funds, the boosters pick up more. At one point, we didn't pay for ice time, and then the boosters picked it up. So then we reverted once we got our money back, paying for the ice. So that was just to clarify on that.
Thank you.
The, the field money that you have in the budget, do you think it's low based on the construction costs for the different facilities and the fields that will be, I think it seems low. I'm just...
We, we, we also have neighbors that owe us favors, and I've been doing this a while. So my friend at Gilderlin can help us, my friend at Chaker can help us. And also, as has been well documented for you folks, that fence field has been offline often. So we have learned to survive without one of our primary fields for years.
And the second question I had was just on uniforms. What does a school pay for in regards to uniforms for all of our teams?
We pay for the uni, we pay for uniforms on a cycle. There are some programs where uniforms are not, gymnastics, swimming, due to the personal nature of those uniforms, are, are covered by parents, or boosters, really, which is the same, of course. Absolutely. 100%. And over the years, due to the sheer numbers, what we have done, and it's really been a push from Coach Douglas, Coach Rickert, you know, in our running programs, we are fading, you know, phasing in more and more of our running. Obviously, buying, you know, 275 uniforms... Obviously, buying, you know, two-hundred-and-seventy-five uniforms at one time, or, you know, half and half would be a super huge cost. My budget code for uniforms tends to be in the twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollar range. It costs about four or five thousand dollars for one varsity level home and away set. So what we've been doing with those programs is phasing them in. And of course, depending on the nature of the sport. Some sports are, you know, lacrosse is pulling, and it's a lot more physical, whereas, you know, baseball uniforms, we've had for six years now. So we try to keep it in a five-to-seven-year cycle. We have spreadsheets, so we'll look at that when it's time. And then, of course, coaches, I meet with all of our coaches, varsity coaches, at the end of their seasons. They do a budget sheet for me, and they will tell me, hey, you know what? My modified team really is in need of uniforms, or my team really needs uniforms. And then, we'll, you know, adjust that accordingly. Once the new, the July 1 new codes have been replenished, then we can go ahead and purchase.
Okay. Yeah, I just had heard a little bit of griping on the cycle time, so I was just wondering how.
You always will.
I know, I know.
So do I. I hear about it, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Len?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening. So I'm Nick Insonia, I'm Director of Facilities. The O&M Department is the cost center for district operations. This includes all costs related to all the facilities, grounds, utilities, custodial and maintenance services, and our health and safety. Quick note, we are preparing to break ground on our forty-point-seven million dollar 2021 capital bond project as soon as we get final SED approval. As I go through our slides, feel free to ask any questions, or we can hold them till the end. So our first slide shows our budget overview for operations and maintenance, and I'll jump to the end first. Overall, we have a ninety-three thousand, almost ninety-four thousand dollar reduction in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. We're maintaining almost a, basically, a flat budget. Our salaries, we had a slight increase for our annual cost of living raises built into the contracts. Equipment and vehicles, one thing that you may know is there was a substantial decrease in the budget line this year, as opposed to last year. And if we recall, we had a inflow of resources along reductions in debt service, giving this department an opportunity to address additional equipment and some of our deferred equipment. So we took advantage of that last year. This year's budget, the twenty-three, twenty-four, is more in line with previous year's budgets, and it does meet our needs over at O&M. I'll be talking about that in a later slide. Our utilities, we have a decrease in seven thousand dollars, or estimated decrease of seven thousand dollars. Is, again, we purchased most of our electric from Forefront Energy, who developed our two-point-one megawatt solar array that we have, our solar farm. This is at a twenty-year fixed rate, so it's kind of easy for us to project. Our natural gas is also purchased through a consortium with Bosse's, and is at a fixed rate as well. Communications and water are relatively unchanged. One thing I do want to point out is, once we do have our turf field, I'm expecting our water usage to decrease, because we won't have to irrigate the new one. So the Field 2 irrigation system will be coming out when we do put the turf field in. Our contracted services, you know, last year, we had quite a cost associated with rental of a freezer and temporary storage. We no longer have that this year, however, we do have an increase of about sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. The reason for this increase is our 2024 building condition surveys are due, and that's about forty-eight thousand of the sixty-eight thousand. We have our New York State Fire inspections. We have our new telematics associated with Geotab for fleet vehicles. That's our monitoring for our fleet vehicles. And an increase in our building maintenance and repair budget line of five thousand dollars due to inflationary costs. The contracted services budget line includes nine line items on my budget. So it's a combination of all of our line items. Our special projects decrease from last year's budget, but the line, again, will meet the needs of the district, and I'll go over that in a future slide. And then, this one's interesting. Our custodial and maintenance supplies increased by thirty-eight thousand dollars due to inflationary costs for electrical, plumbing, carpentry, grounds and athletics, and HVAC supplies. And in addition to our MERV-13 air filters that we're using, you know, that was pandemic-related. And that sum equals thirteen budget line items. All right, so salary and position information. Our staffing level remains unchanged this year at fifty-eight full-time employees. There has been some turnover in our custodial staff, our HVAC division, and the grounds division. Most recently, we lost our ground supervisor to the Voorheesville Central School District. He will be missed, and we're in the process this evening of approving his replacement. Currently, there are no custodial vacancies. However, we do have two maintenance vacancies, one in our HVAC division and one in the grounds position. Correction, grounds division. Our substitutes and miscellaneous line item there is summer help and our night differential. We pay a premium to have our folks that work in the evenings. This includes differential pay, extra summer custodial help, and insurance buyouts. And we have three overtime categories. You can see our overtime went up by three thousand dollars. This includes the use of our facilities for outside groups. We have custodial coverage and staff that assist. School activities, maintenance and custodial overtime for when we do have absences or we have an event, like we did two weeks ago Monday. We had a little incident with some flooding. And this is all tracked throughout the year, but the, most of our overtime is incurred on weekends for activities that we have within our buildings. So this year, we have some interesting special projects. The next slide shows a list of them all and the estimated cost associated with them. It's a decrease from the previous year's budget, but again, we feel that this will meet the needs of the district. The first two line items, Eagle Elementary and Elsmere Elementary, the bathroom ceilings and the fence along Herrick were removed, if we recall, from our twenty-one capital bond project for cost cutting. It's something that O&M can handle inside, so this will be part of our operating cost. The Elsmere door and carpet are required to meet code and to enhance the acoustics of the music room over at Elsmere. Recently, Elsmere moved their music room from a carpeted space to a non-carpeted space, and the acoustics are pretty rough with all the hard surfaces. So we plan on carpeting that. Interesting, and speaking with Len prior to budget, we have a proposed wrestling room expansion here at the middle school. And in the, for those of you that don't know, down in the lower level of the middle school, we have a wrestling room. It's where they practice. Obviously, we have our tournaments and matches at the high school and gym A typically. But there's two large spaces down there. We have been using operating funds, and we opened up the wall between the two spaces. And this year, we would like to expand the wrestling room because of the volume of wrestling students. We want to make a larger space for them. It's too small right now. So that, what that will allow us to do is to fit the space up, put the pads on the floor, purchase new pads, and pad the walls, and make it comparable to the room that's next door. Additionally, that could be used for other programs if they expand. It would just be padded, but anybody can use the space. The middle school, you know, there's a small line item there for replacing the fence at the dumpsters. It's beyond its useful life. We've repaired it, and it's no longer viable. And then, we have some furniture purchase for the district office. And one of my things that I really want to do is the high school pool perimeter lighting. Okay, so we did a capital project, two phases of it. One was the pool deck itself, and then the other was the infrastructure, the pool pumps and everything in the basement. The only thing that hasn't been done is the perimeter lighting on the pool deck. Okay, it's very outdated. It's T-12. We're in LED now, so we skipped, we should have went to T-8 or T-5, but now we're in LED. So I'd really like to get that and finish the pool at the high school and make it complete. So those are our special projects or internal projects. And, you know, last year, we were at a hundred-and-eighteen thousand, so we reduced it by about eight thousand dollars. Twelve thousand dollars, excuse me.
Nick, would you prefer, wait, I just had a question about one of these, but I don't want to. I'm wondering about the fence at Elsmere?
Yes.
What it is that we're fencing in or out? Because you, I feel like you'd have to fence all around that, where the dumpsters are. I'm trying to understand the point.
Okay, so if you're familiar, the side street is off of Delaware is Herrick.
Yep.
Okay, on that side street, there is no fence. There's a backstop. The perimeter, or, excuse me, there's a fence all the way around the perimeter, but there's nothing stopping the students from kind of running out in traffic. And that is the playfield, so we really want to have this fence put there as a break. All right, so it's not enclosing completely. We'll still have our driveway that'll have the wire rope gate, and then the dumpsters are right there. But it's a long Herrick. Right now, there's some wood there. There's wooden posts, but it's not really.
It's not to keep anything out?
Correct. Correct. The deer will still run across there.
You're good.
Yeah. But it's really to, you know, for the safety of the students, because we do have a backstop there, and if a ball goes past and they're not looking, you know, there's car traffic. And also, just the safety of the students.
That makes sense.
Somebody could pull over and, you know, I don't want to talk about that. But, you know, it's to prevent the students from getting out there and running in the street.
Just piggybacking on that, is that going to block community access to the playfield and whatnot?
No, ma'am. It's really, it's not a gated fence. It's going to attach to the corner behind the backstop of the property line and just run all the way up to that paved driveway. So you can just walk right through.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on the special projects? Okay. So next, I'm moving into our equipment and vehicle budget line. I'm sorry. I skipped this. No, I didn't. Got me. Okay, so our equipment and vehicles this year, we do have a slight increase. But as you can see by the list, the first four line items up there are for our custodial staff. It's to replace equipment and to buy a few items that are new. The custodial equipment is to upgrade or replace things that are past its useful life. I know that you wouldn't think that vacuum cleaners, but our commercial vacuum cleaners are very expensive. You know, for seven of them, it's fifty-six hundred dollars. But they last a long time. But we're due for replacement in various buildings, high school, middle school, Eagle, Elsmere, and Slingerlands. And then, we wet-dry vacuums, same thing, at the high school, Eagle, and Elsmere. A floor scrubber, that's what we use to clean the large hallway floors. Eagle is past its useful life, and we do need to replace one of those. And then, we're looking at two riding floor scrubbers. One here at the high school to replace one that is beyond its, or nearing its end of useful life. And then, a new one for Glenmont, because it's pretty tough doing those long hallways by hand. So that's going to increase our efficiency with the custodial cleaning at all of our buildings. So we try to keep this in a good cycle. Every five to seven years, we upgrade our equipment. We keep our equipment that we do replace, and we use that as spares as things break down. But some of our equipment is becoming obsolete. One of the drawbacks with these riding scrubbers and the floor scrubbers is they're battery-operated, and the batteries are very expensive right now. And we go through a lot of batteries, and it has to do with some of the equipment. Each time we ask for parts, they try to sell us new ones, and, you know, we say, no, we're going to repair this one until we get a good return on our investment. But we're at the point now that the high school really needs one. Obviously, we walk these halls, and it's a lot of mopping if we don't have those floor scrubbers. The, getting away from the custodial, over in the maintenance department, we're looking to replace a 2008 zero-turn mower. It has seventeen-hundred-and-forty-seven operating hours. It's fifteen years old. The deck is rotting out, and it's not cost-effective to replace the deck on a machine of that age. That would be surplus, and we would get, or most likely get, a reasonable amount when we put it to auction. The field parking, marking and paint machine, we use that heavily. We're marking fields constantly, and we do want to have a backup. And so we would like to purchase a new and have the old one still maintained and use that as a backup. The 2008 Jeep Cherokee, it serves as an administrative vehicle currently, and we use it for snow plowing in the winter months. It's a smaller vehicle. It does have a plow on it. We use that for some of the tighter areas where our larger trucks don't fit. It only has twenty-five thousand miles on it, but it is, it has drivetrain issues, and it's at its fifteen-year or standard fifteen-year replacement cycle. We're looking at a, no longer than fifteen years, typically twelve to fifteen on replacement of our vehicles, and this one is certainly due. And then, the last line item there is a supply chain contingency line item of seventy-five thousand dollars. And this is interesting as well. This was added to cover, it's a contingency to cover any escalation in supply chain. When I learned last year with the supply chain challenges we had, we were on the docket to purchase five new vehicles. I was only able to purchase four of those five that the board approved last year because of the cost escalation. So we were able to successfully purchase four of them, but of those four, every one of them was twenty thousand dollars more than it was the prior year. All right, and some of the vehicles, we couldn't purchase because they weren't manufacturing them. We have these purchasing windows. So that's a contingency built in. Again, we had the reduction there. It was three-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand last year, so we're down at a hundred-and-ninety-three, which is slightly elevated due to that contingency line item. We normally average around a hundred thousand dollars. Any questions on vehicles and equipment? I'd like to talk about this year, the twenty-three, twenty-four capital outlay. For those of you that aren't aware, we can spend up to a hundred thousand dollars on internal projects that we will get state aid reimbursement for. It does have a timeline associated with it. It has to be completed by June thirtieth of that year and closed out in order for us to receive aid. So this year, I'm recommending a capital outlay project of the Vigilon Door Status Monitoring System. During the 2016 capital bond project, our security cameras and our access control system was upgraded to a product called the Vigilon Control Center. Where I'm headed with this is, we have the software and the platform in place. Now, I would like to expand on it. Recently, we had a security audit or a threat and vulnerability assessment done district-wide here at Bethlehem Central Schools. The company that we contracted with was Crisis Leadership Preparedness Solutions, or CLPS. They've done many districts locally and downstate. And recommendations were made by CLPS to have our perimeter doors, our exterior perimeter doors monitored. Okay, this is something that we planned on expanding, but now that they really highlighted that for us, we would like to proceed with this as a capital outlay project. Our current, we do have door contacts in place, but it's only for our security system. Okay, so that means when everybody's gone for the evening and our security alarm is set, we have door contacts that are only monitored when it's armed. All right, so we don't see those when it's disarmed, for those of you that have security systems at home. Ours works the same way here, just at a larger scale. So this system can be integrated into our existing Vigilon Control Center platform with just, I know it's expensive, but it's a simple incorporation by just replacing the existing door contacts and adding some panels that collect that data, and then we push it out on our Vigilon system. All right, the door status monitoring system will trigger and send alerts during occupied hours, so while we are here, we will know that one of our perimeter doors is open. We recall what happened in Uvalde, and that was a item of contention there, was the door open, was it left open, how was the door open, et cetera. This is one of the biggest challenges that we have, because folks may have propped the door for a minute and then forgot about it, whatever the reason may be, we have the ability with this program to know that our door is open. We may be able to say, hey, we're going to have that door open on purpose for a reason, and we can just change the program for that moment, and it times out, or in other words, override it. Okay? So this would, this system would be independent of our security system. So during the day, it would send alerts to designated building personnel, whether it be the principal, assistant principals, whomever, that an exterior door is open, and we can program the amount of time before it triggers that alert. An example, that would be for the younger students, it takes them a little longer, they're all in a line, but at a high school, you know, somebody goes through the door, you know, five to 10 seconds, that door should be shut again. I've experienced this program at a college when I used to work there, and it's a great way to know that our doors are open and our buildings are secure, or shut, and our buildings are secure. This system obviously can be used in conjunction with our card access, our existing security cameras, our Raptor, our personal awareness training, personnel awareness training, and this will significantly enhance the security of our buildings during occupied hours. And we would, the plan is to start at the high school, it's our largest building, and continue to integrate the monitoring program at all district buildings through the use of our operating funds, state and federal funding sources, and future capital projects. The next budget line item is labeled, we termed it pandemic response supplies. You know, some folks have the opinion that the pandemic's over, we're not so sure, we don't know what the future holds, so to err on the side of caution, we're carrying $15,000 for COVID-related supplies, or any other pandemic that might pop up. So we just want to carry that. And this funding could be used in support if we wanted to do an extra filter change, if we had to buy additional hand sanitizer to replenish our stocks. So that is our budget, but I wanted to talk quickly about the Capital Bond Project and give you a quick update. This slide shows where we were and where we are currently. It's a little, starting to get a little concerned. So our original schedules show that, you know, we were going to advertise our bids back in December or January of '23, and our actual bids went out on February 6th, so we were pushed a little bit. We expected our bids to be received in February of '23, and we have pushed that date to March 14th. We were going to award the contracts in March, and again, that's been pushed to April 5th due to not having final approval from State Education Department. One of the things about awarding the contracts, we could do it sooner if the board would want to do a special session to approve the recommended contractors. One of the things that is interesting is, we are, our construction begin time doesn't really change, though, because we can't really start construction on anything until April of '23. All right, so one thing it does do is it does challenge us slightly, because our submittals would normally be done ahead of time, and that's where the contractors submit their proposed equipment or materials, and then the architect and engineer review it, and they approve the submittals. So we will be a little behind on that. And then we have not changed our final construction date, end of construction date. So just to add a little bit to this, our project was submitted to SED on August 9th of '22, normally it's a 12 to 14-week approval process, that's to go from the architect and the engineering review. On November 16th of '22, SED required that all federally and non-federally funded projects get broken or separated out. Okay? And that's kind of like when we were expecting to have approval. Due to the large volume of federally funded projects in the state of New York, they were just bottlenecked. So they said, hey, federally funded projects have a timeline, a deadline associated with them, you have to spend the money by this time, or you lose that money. So SED decided to have us, have all the school districts break that, your projects out by federally and non-federally funded. So that put us behind a little bit, it was a surprise, and we did that, and we pushed it back to state ed on December 9th, our split-out projects, okay? Currently, the engineering review for the federally funded projects is completed, and we're waiting on the final approval from the project manager for our federally funded projects. And our non-federally funded projects are in engineering review, it's not completed yet. The drawback to this is, we do not have a final approval date from SED. It's as soon as they can get it done, but we are in process. I can ask them a lot, and we kind of ask them quite frequently, but they can't give us an exact date. So at this moment, we are in compliance with everything that state ed needs from us, it's just giving them the time to have their engineers and project managers review all of our documents. Our project did go out to bid on February 6th. Some may wonder, why would we bid if we didn't have approval? And that's to keep the train rolling, okay? Our original bid opening date was going to be March 7th, because we expected that we would have State Education Department approval, however, we did not. So taking advantage of that time, we extended it to March 14th to receive bids in hopes that we're going to get more bidders and be more competitive with our bidding, and hopefully have favorable bids coming back to us. So we are on track to receive our bids on March 14th, and once we receive those, we will be doing our due diligence in vetting or qualifying our bidders, make sure everything is covered, and we will sit tight and wait for state ed approval. As soon as we have that, we will make our contract award recommendations to the Board of Education for your approval. The, again, as I said, the beginning of construction and the end dates have not changed. If we get too far along here with not having state ed approval, that is going to be, you know, very concerning, but we're not expecting, we're expecting within the next two to three weeks, all of our requirements have been met. Something of interest is our construction manager, Turner Construction, he has reported to us that other capital district schools have received overall favorable bids in our local market for capital projects similar in size. Most recently, it was Gilderland. Gilderland overall had favorable bids, except for their plumbing contractor, because they only received one plumbing bid. We are working hastily to make sure that we have more than one. Asked why, a lot of the mechanical and plumbing, for example, Chris and Foley Brothers Plumbing and Heating, they kind of have been focusing on the HVAC side of it. All right? The other thing that we have done as a project team is, we have moved our HVAC, which has the longest lead time for the equipment, to summer '24, knowing that we're kind of behind the curve on that. So we'll be able to order the equipment and install it. If we tried to do that in '23, there's no way that that could happen. So we moved our scheduling and logistics around to ensure that we can meet those needs. And I didn't have it on a slide, but we also just received our building permit for the upgrade of the high school security cameras as part of our '22-'23 capital outlay. So the materials are ordered, we have the permit, and we'll have that done, and we will be 100% on Vigilon cameras, which I know that the high school staff will appreciate. Are there any questions?
I just had a couple of quick questions. So what I'm hearing you say is that, at this point, it would not be particularly helpful to have a special meeting of the board to approve that faster? You're not sure yet?
If they said tomorrow, you're approved, it certainly would.
Okay.
Because we missed, you know, we'd have to go another month. Do we expect that for the March 15th? We don't know yet.
Okay.
We wouldn't have enough time to vet and qualify the bidders. So realistically, I'm looking at, it would save us a week or two.
Okay.
And it's really up to the board. But the recommendation is, absolutely, if the board would support that, we would, you know, as soon as we can get full approvals, a lot of the, not a lot, but several of our contracts are state contracts. So as soon as we have approval, and approval from the board, we can pull the trigger and place the order for the equipment. A lot of the athletics equipment, the Turf Stadium is on a consortium or a state contract, so we could, as soon as we have it, we could go. So it would be advantageous by a week or two.
Okay, thank you.
Can you let us know that if that becomes necessary?
Yes, sir. Jody gets the same emails as I.
I didn't ask, I figured, I just assumed.
Yeah, so absolutely, and we would make that recommendation. And, you know, again, we would consider it carefully, does it make sense? Is four days going to save us anything? No, but if it's three weeks, it certainly would.
Sure, yeah, just keep us informed, obviously. And then my other question was with respect to the slide that you had about salaries?
Yes.
In the budget. It looked like the number for the substitutes had dropped by about 20,000?
Yes.
And I was just wondering why, do we not need as many?
We always have a need for substitutes, but we have been blessed with having a full staff.
Okay.
Right now. Sorry about that, with the mic. But yeah, so we have been blessed with having a full staff, and quite frankly, we were a little high before, we never actually expended all that. So right now, we're comfortable with that number, and hopefully, everything works to our favor this year. I don't expect to exceed it.
Willow, I saw you.
Oh, I just have one quick one, the Vigilon, I don't know if I'm saying it correctly.
Yes.
Is that captured in another outlet? I just didn't see a dollar amount anywhere on the slideshow.
Okay, so back in 2016 bond, we actually upgraded our Cisco cameras and our Cisco, I don't want to say the acronym, our card access system, we upgraded it in a previous bond project. So the, that's all bought and paid for. We're now going to expand on that. We have the software, we have the cameras, we have the card access. Next, we're going to do the door monitoring, which will reside on that platform, so we don't have to buy any software, it's really the hardware and the installation of it, and the programming.
Which is already done?
Built into this budget that you presented, or?
It's a capital.
It's a $100,000 capital.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm missing.
That's what I was wondering, if it's in the.
Oh, the capital outlay is $100,000.
And it's part of that.
I'm sorry, I made the presumption.
Okay, you can only go up to $100,000.
Right.
For the state.
Got it.
And it would be great if we could increase that, because nothing costs $100,000 anymore. Any other questions?
Meredith?
I just had a quick question regarding the bond project. I know you said, we hope that it will be done by the end of the fall. I'm sure fall sports teams are, you know, would love to see the field done by the beginning of the fall. So in terms of priority, is that going to be done first? Do you think that there's a possibility to be done?
Yeah, so.
By the end of season?
The, when I say late fall of '24, that's the actual entire project. As far as the Turf Stadium, we expect to have that done by the fall of '23, this year.
Okay, yes.
It's about six months, so, you know, if you look at, you know, if we can get the green light in April, we're going to be fine.
But that's a priority that that would get.
Absolutely. And that's, if you recall, that's why we packaged it, such that if our electrical was too high and we had to go back out to bid or something, that would kind of stop everything. So we packaged it using Keystone Purchasing Network or Consortium, to where everything associated with the turf field, with the exception of the concession stand, is built into that package. And as soon as we have SED approval and the board's approval, we literally will write the purchase order, and they will break ground. Interesting, Queensberry did theirs today. They had a ceremony for breaking ground on their turf field. So we're right there, just waiting.
Did you have any questions, John? Any questions? Evan? Christine?
I just had a couple. On the substitutes, this might be a question for you, and you alluded to it. Out of the 153 one that we budgeted last year, do you know how much we used of that?
I do, if I can, excuse me, one second. It'll take me a second here, so we had, it doesn't incorporate it all, but an example, last year, we had budgeted $70,000, and we expensed $1,380. And that was just for substitutes and custodial. That didn't include the other line items like use of facilities over time, school activities over time, night differential, and summer maintenance.
So out of the 153, if half of that was 1,000, what was the other amount, was it?
I'm looking for the 153.
I think it was the 22, 23.
Oh, 22, yeah, so substitutes and miscellaneous.
It's probably in several different.
Yeah, and that's, that's one, two, three, four, five, six line item, so I can get you that answer, I'd have to break it out.
I was just wondering if we budgeted it a little high, that's all. On the overrides on the door.
Yes.
And it's funny, because I came into the meeting early, I don't remember what meeting it was, but the door was propped open when I came in the back door, and I was.
We would be alerted to that.
But that's the question, so if you can override it, and nobody's at the door, and it's still propped open, doesn't that kind of defeat the purpose?
No, this is during the day.
Right, so.
The day.
Right, so what would happen is, if we had the system in place right now, and we wanted to prop that door open just to let some air in, we, it would trigger an alert, it comes via email, text, or however we want it to alert us, because there shouldn't be a door propped open. And that would be, it could be 24/7, but we're not here 24/7. So at 11:30, when the building gets shut down, we go back on security, and if somebody breaks that, or opens that door, it's going to trigger the burglar alarm. But the purpose of this system is to let us know while people are here, while the students are being taught, staff is here, hey, we have an exterior door propped open, and it really shouldn't be. And that's just another measure for security, for us to know that a door is propped open.
No, I think it's great to get it, I just want to make sure, like, I don't know if it was continually ed, we kept the door open, or why it was open, but just to make sure security-wise it's safe.
Right, so.
Even if we have it.
The nice thing is, if we did say, hey, we know we're going to have the 122 door open for whatever reason, we can program that, but it's not permanent. We can give it a time, okay, we're going to do it for two hours. As soon as that timer runs out in the software, it goes back to, hey, your door's propped open. And it'll, if we wanted to be very annoying, we could have it tell you every three minutes, five minutes, every 10 minutes. But the intent is to have someone investigate that. And some of the dialogue that I've had with the principals, they would really enjoy that, because of course, they can't be at every exterior door, and we're really trying to change that behavior of propping doors open.
And I think it's great. With respect to the bids, now, they were supposed to go out in December, but they didn't? Did we hold them intentionally back because we were waiting for SED to get back to us and approve it?
Yes.
So we originally held it.
Yes, we didn't go out to bid, well, there was multiple reasons. Part of it was because of the split of the federally and non-federally funded, and when that, when that happened, our drawings were not up to snuff for SED.
Okay.
Okay, we were in a hurry, if you will, and we weren't as accurate as we were supposed to be, our architects. So when we split. So when we split them out, we kind of left the whole section out. They started to review them and said, hey, what happened here? So they sent that back to us, and we had to correct that and then send it back. So yes, we didn't, there would have been no advantage of going out to bid if we didn't have SED approval.
Okay. And we, do we have approval, or we don't have approval?
We do not.
We have approval, well, for the federally funded projects, but not for the entire bond.
So the ones we resubmitted, we have approval on?
Well, we had to resubmit both.
Right.
Okay.
And right now, we are architecturally approved, engineering approved, we're just waiting for the project manager to literally sign off for our federally funded projects. All right? A lot of that is our HVAC, our pavilions, things like that. The non-federally is currently in engineering review. Once that's complete, again, project manager final sign off, and we'll have full approval.
Okay. So we expect it.
I can't wait.
All right. That's all I have.
Catherine?
Following up on that.
That's all I have.
Catherine?
Following up on that, can we bifurcate similarly internally, so that you can start project, like, do we have anything that's just federally review that you could accept bids back on and get going on? Or is it like bids come in for the whole shebang and?
No.
Okay.
Once I have the project manager's sign off.
Yeah.
Actually sent an email to her today, just saying, hey, can we kind of, you know, is there anything we can give you to help?
Right.
You know, I'm doing it backward, but is there anything we owe you?
Yeah, yeah.
So as soon as that, we get that, we actually can make the purchases for our federally funded, the pavilions, the equipment for the HVAC. So I think your question is, we don't have to wait for everything to be approved to start the approved side of it.
And would you, again, going back, would it be worth us gathering in an interim way to vote for, sign off on bids that were for the federal stuff, or does that mean most?
Um.
I mean, I trust you to tell us when you need us, but just so I understand.
Right, so the answer to that is, it's, it's not that simple, because a lot of our federally and non-federally are incorporated into the same prime contractor.
Right, that makes sense.
So what we could do is, again, we could order the equipment that we're buying outright. We could say, yes, thank you, we'll get the turf field started, we'll get the pavilions ordered, we'll do that. But as far as the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, and some of the site work, we would have to wait for the non-federally funds or projects to be approved as well.
No problem, just want to get you the support as expeditiously as possible.
Honestly, I'll be jumping up and down. I cannot wait to put a shovel in the ground. It's been a long time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening.
So following our meeting on February 15th, I know there were a couple of questions and follow-up requests from the board that Krim and I took back over the past week or so to pull together. We're going to sort of split this part of the program, if that's okay with the board. There's some areas that Krim is going to follow up on, and I know that there were some real specific questions associated with the bus propositions that the board needs to consider in advance of the March 15 deadline, and we'll go into a little more detail on those as well. We're going to hand off to Krim in the first instance.
Good evening. So as John alluded to, over the past couple of weeks, we've been following up on questions from the last board meeting regarding the transportation budget proposal. On the EV bus battery replacement, as of today, the approximate battery replacement cost is $73,000. In context, the value of an eight-to-nine-year-old diesel bus, based upon our 2022 bus sales data, was about $19,800. So technically speaking, if we were to replace a battery in year nine, we'll be, we would spend $73,000 on a $19,000 bus. Surplus vehicle revenue from summer and fall of 2022 totaled $439,483. In the past, this was treated as 100% general fund revenue, but SED now requires this reported on the annual state aid reimbursement, and it now decreases that amount by our aid percentage of 68%. Tylo Technologies, the maker of the parent bus stop app, MyStop, has indicated their willingness to engage with the makers of Parent Square to determine is integration is feasible. They are in the very early stages of this process. As more information becomes available, I will share with the board. Not on the slide, but a quick update on recruitment. As mentioned in the last board meeting, we have one driver on the agenda tonight for our appointment. One of the applicants needing a CDL upgrade passed their CDL road test today, and I am anticipating having one or two drivers ready for our appointment on the next board meeting agenda.
Yay, congratulations.
This graph displays a quick comparison between the approximate fuel costs of operating our five EV buses from July 2022 to February 2023. This is based upon our 2022 billing data that shows a rate of .675 per kilowatt hour. The diesel cost is based upon the average from our actual fuel drops from the same period. The data, as expected, shows an overall cost savings between diesel versus electric. It's important to note that this, that the data is based upon a small subset of our fleet over a relatively short timeline. This data does not fully reflect the utilization of buses due to downtime, due to their downtime. Also, keep in mind that these buses are specific or unspecified out-of-district runs under the grant program, and not necessarily reflective of a routine B-CSD run, stop-starts, multiple routes, et cetera. What this data does show is the promise of this technology has for operational savings comparable to a diesel bus. Next slide. All right, the animation that you're seeing right now gives a quick overview of the techno, how the technology works, in reference to the stop-arm cameras on the buses. When the bus stop, the door is opened by the driver and the stop-arm is deployed, the system goes into action. There's no action required by the driver or the student transportation department in this process. The external video camera captures the violation using a proprietary AI system, forwards it to Bus Patrol, and then is forwarded to the Albany County Traffic Safety Specialist for review and approval. A violation notice is then issued to the registered owner of the vehicle by mail. If the violator contests the ticket, then the bus, then Bus Patrol direct that person to the court of the jurisdiction that the violation occurred in. If the bus is operating in any municipalities that Bus Patrol already has an existing agreement with, outside of Albany County, any violations caught by the cameras can be enforced. Due to snow days and staffing shortages with the vendor, the completion of the installation has been delayed. Approximately four to five buses are awaiting install. Working with our fleet services staff, buses that are used daily were prioritized for installation. Any remaining buses pending install are our spare buses. Bus Patrol will be returning to our district on Monday, March 6, and plans to have the remaining buses done by Wednesday, March 8. Enforcement started this past month, actually, last week during winter break. Due to us being out, data collection really didn't start until this Monday. On March 17, the superintendent's conference day, we have arranged Bus Patrol to speak to our department in an information session. Bus Patrol will also be providing general operating, operations training for our fleet services staff. Although Bus Patrol monitors system health remotely and is responsible for the maintenance of the system through the agreement with Albany County, this orientation will help our mechanics be familiar with the system as they work in and around the systems on the bus. The following slides provide an overview of the mounting locations for each type of bus, excluding the mid-sized buses, as they have not been delivered yet. As mentioned earlier, the system works in conjunction with the stop-arm. Since the four-wheel-drive school vehicles do not have stoparms, the vehicles are excluded from this program. Next slide. Any questions thus far? At this time, I'll turn it over to John.
Thanks, Krim. Wanted to start off with sort of a refresh of some of the items that we talked about on the EV bus propositions on the 15th, particularly what we know about our bus proposition comparisons and some of the unknowns. First, on the knowns, we do know that EV buses are significantly more expensive than their traditional counterparts. The state reimbursement window is 12 years compared to five years for diesel buses, which results in an annual net impact that is greater to the district. The battery warranty is presently eight years on an existing fleet, and the present-day value of a replacement value, as Krim had mentioned, is $73,000. Charging infrastructure is developing, and is at an additional cost compared to the data figures that we provided solely on the bus propositions last meeting. And there are some operational limitations and challenges of today's EV buses that may change as the technology progresses. On the unknown side. Next slide, please. We're not quite sure, at least at this juncture, what the state and federal grant and funding aid opportunities will be to minimize net cost impacts to the district. The feasibility and commitment of New York State to the existing 2027 and 2035 mandates. What our debt service approach may be. Presently, we traditionally have gone out with bond anticipation notes for bus acquisitions, which have a five-year payback period. There's maybe an opportunity to convert those bands to bonds, which would have a longer, would spread out your impact on debt service for longer than five years. Given those 2027 and 2035 mandates, what is the impact to supply and demand on both cost and availability, and national grid readiness and timeline to address the charging infrastructure needed to bring everyone to meet the goals of the initiative? So when we met on the 15th, I know there was a lot of information that was sort of given, and the board had sort of asked for a little bit more feedback in terms of the EVs in general. One of the things I wanted to sort of highlight that, the options that I presented to you folks at the table on the 15th were really based on two critical pieces of information, namely, the 2027 and 2035 mandated, where 2027 is the last date in which school districts would be allowed to purchase non-zero emission vehicles, and the 2035 date in which districts would not, would not be allowed to own non-zero emission dates. So any movement in either of those dates will significantly substantially change the information that we presented to you at the last board meeting. We had to base our presentation on something, that is the fact pattern that we know today. Any changes between now and any of those, those dates will certainly change the decision-making process of this board, our vehicle replacement plan, the rotation of diesel buses for EV buses. One thing to know is 2027 is just four years away, my anticipation, and I'm not necessarily one to speculate, but those dates very well may shift, which will provide the board some discretion on paths moving forward. So one of the three options that we provided was the, was a purchase of a seventh EV bus. Sixth EV bus should be coming shortly, we're waiting for confirmation from Thomas on that. We should have a better date this week, but the, one of the bus propositions in front of you is for a seventh EV. And the district is, at this point, able to accommodate that into the existing infrastructure and can make that work if the board decides to move in that direction. Conversely, if the district wishes to take a pause and catch its collective breath on the EV bus proposition, to take stock of status and plan next steps, and wait for better and greater clarity for the state and federal governments in terms of funding streams, and obtain a better handling on EV technology and changes, the district can certainly shelve the EV option and move towards a bus proposition that has two, a replacement of two smaller buses that are wheelchair-accessible, along with one gas suburban, which would be used for bus purposes. A temporary break in the EV replacement process, by adding that, that seventh EV bus would not significantly change the EV replacement, or the vehicle replacement schedule as it's presently standing. Assuming that the 2027 and 2035 dates do not mean sort of hard and fast dates, if those remain hard and fast dates, it really changes the discretion in which the board and the district has, particularly as it relates to the 2425 bus proposition, where nine vehicles are presently slated for replacement. I know the board wanted to get a little bit more of additional information on the EV buses that we've had. Couple of things I want to note before we get into those, is that we're talking about, you know, five buses on a 100-plus fleet that have been in operation for a relatively short period of time. Moreover, the runs of those EV buses are not the traditional runs that we experience on our routes in general. Because of the NYSERTA grant program, they had to be routed in particular manners to be eligible for the grant. So they're on longer runs compared to more of the day-to-day runs that we would see elsewhere in the district. I wanted to highlight some of the successes of the EV program to date. Bethlehem Central School District was a leader in embracing the greener technology in the EV transportation initiative. It was able to maximize federal granting funding through NYSERTA to minimize the impact to local real property taxpayers, and wound up bringing the cost of that EV fleet down to what a normal, traditional diesel bus would cost. There was a huge community buy-in in terms of the EV initiative, and that buy-in extended not only to the community at large, the first responder community was very interested in coming in and sort of understanding the technology and how it would impact the first responder community. The district individuals at large also, from drivers to mechanics to O&amp;M staff, everyone sort of bought into this initiative because they wanted to see it succeed. We've heard some interesting anecdotal evidence from drivers who find that the EVs are more pleasant to drive. Kids tend to be better behaved on the EV buses because they're, they're not yelling over the drone of the diesel engine. So I'm waiting for, like, everyone to be running to an EV bus, just because the kids are a little bit quieter and more well-behaved. We've had some fantastic partnerships and relationship building with all of the partners associated with the EV initiative, whether it's Matthews or Thomas or Proterra, who are the designers and makers of the batteries on the buses, or Delta, who are the manufacturers of the wall-mounted charges. They're all, all of them are willing to work with us and are 100% committed to the district to ensure that the initiative is a success. So I always find it important to sort of start with those real positives. Now, there's a learning curve with the EV technology, and, you know, because the district was first out of the gate on this, we've sort of experienced these in the first instance and firsthand. So I do want to, for a balanced approach, try to provide some of those points for reference as well. There were some initial training issues, particularly in terms of difficulty in engaging the bus when it was idle for a particular period of time. This was actually a built-in feature of EV buses for an anti-rolling feature, but what initially, we didn't realize that when that emergency brake sort of implemented itself, there was a certain sequence of events that the driver needed to implement in order to disengage that brake. So there was a little bit of a learning curve there, some challenges, but that issue has been resolved. been resolved. We experienced a mechanical issue with a vibration on one of the EV buses that presented itself at roughly 50 miles per hour. That bus was pulled from the rotation and was investigated. Tyler and Matthews coordinated with the Transportation Department, sort of trying to isolate that issue. We went through a number of different transmission replacements and the tie in that transmission to the rear axle. And the... what's interesting is it's outside of the EV component of the bus. It's not a battery-related issue. It's not a communication issue between the battery and the motor, but because the real estate of the EV bus is somewhat different compared to a traditional bus, the size of the transmission is a little bit different, you know, the interconnectedness with some of the other mechanical parts. It's not truly EV-related, but it's linked in the same way. That was the only mechanical issue that we've sort of experienced, a raw mechanical issue that has been resolved at no additional cost to the district, and that EV bus is now in the rotation. We had some isolated issues with the 12-volt battery on the bus that were associated with parasitic draws that were investigated. Some of the telemetrics on the bus remained on when the bus shut off because it was on and sort of drained the power in the same way that you would drain your power if you had inadvertently left your interior lights on. That was one instance. There was also an instance where the inverter on the actual Proterra battery remained on and actually drew down some of that 12-volt battery as well. The telemetrics issue has been field-fixed, and the inverter one is next week or so. They've given a... it's close to being operational and fixed on that. And there were a couple of refreshes that required on the buses. When they use the term "refresh," consider it almost like a reboot, and there are times in which the onboard computer of the bus is not necessarily communicating well with the charger, so it sometimes just simply requires a reboot. This is something that's presently outside of the scope of the subject matter expertise and responsibility of the Transportation Department, so in those instances where a reboot is required or a reflash is required, Matthews is Johnny-on-the-spot on that and comes right down and reboots and reflashes the computer for us. We've experienced some power disruptions and the impact between the charging relationship between the wall-mounted chargers and the buses. Anytime that there is a power interruption, if there is a power outage or a break in the service, they call it a handshake agreement between the Delta charger and the onboard computer. If that sort of gets broken or does not respond or recognize one or the other, the bus doesn't charge. So there's been a couple of instances where that handshake agreement has either not occurred or has broken off and sort of amid handshake. In our conversations with all of the partners who have been fantastic to work with, one of the things that they are investigating is this concept called charge management. Krim can go into a little bit more detail on that in a moment. That's an additional piece of software that sort of liaisons and talks between the charger and the bus computer that provides transportation with sort of a visibility window into that charging relationship. So you'll be able to go in and say, hey, bus number one is at X percent. Why is that? We would expect it to be a little bit higher. You can sort of manage your charges a little bit in a more efficient way. During your cold seasons, you may not necessarily want to charging all along. You may want to do it, let's say, for a Monday run started at, let's say, Sunday at midnight that you can sort of warm up your batteries in the same way that you would warm up your diesel buses on a traditional bus. That's the real big component, I think, that we're presently missing in terms of this relationship between the charging components and the buses in general. There has been some changes in technology that we are learning about. For example, bus number seven of the district were interested in moving in that direction. That is the next generation of the EV bus, and there's a compatibility issue with the existing chargers that we have with that new bus. So that's a change. The additional, the five buses plus bus number six will work with the chargers that we have. That new charger that would be required, Delta and the other partners have been willing to swap that out with the appropriate charger for bus number seven. A lot of the charging information really depends on the more data that we have, and given our limited data set between only five EV buses, short period of time, sort of distinct runs, the battery management, charge management's been a little bit difficult because our data set's relatively small. We've been working with Proterra to try to get a better sense of what options there may be moving forward, and they've been good partners and willing to work with us. Did I cover that? Did I say anything wrong? Just to make sure. Anything I didn't want to... I didn't add? On the bond project side, again, the more data we have, the better we... better versed to talk about this, is presently the bond project calls for three charging stations with four tails, think of four plugs that you can more or less charge, 12 buses at the same time. That would be in addition to the six to seven wall-mounted chargers that we presently have. Given some changes in technology, based on our utilization, again, Proterra's looking at roughly the same data set that we are with limited number of buses on distinct runs, depending on the charge management design and software, there may be a change in the recommendation to move to a three-tail charging system, which would change the layout a little bit. We would presently need 11 four-tail chargers based on the replacement plan. I think that would move it up to 14, which would change some design specs, would require some additional SED approvals, and would change some of the physical layout. That hasn't been firmly decided, but I did want to highlight that we are investigating and researching that as well. All right. So with that being said, there were three bus options that we presented to you at the last meeting, one of which was one EV bus with one additional Suburban. There was bus option number two was replacement of two 45-passenger diesel buses that are wheelchair-accessible, think of your midsize bus with an eight-passenger, along with an eight-passenger gasoline four-by-four Tahoe. And bus number... option number three was really sort of trying to mirror and encapsulate all three options here in one, which would be a 70-passenger diesel large bus, two 45-passenger wheelchair-accessible mini-buses, and the eight-passenger four-by-four Tahoe. Again, if you're looking in terms of raw cost, option number one and option two are roughly the same at roughly $530,000. Option number three is more in line with our traditional bus prop amount at roughly $1,376. The goal was trying to minimize some wild swings in your debt service associated with the bus proposition moving forward. So as I mentioned, you know, it's ultimately the board's decision here. We can certainly accommodate a seventh EV bus. It's not significantly different compared to buses one through six, understanding that there are some technology changes and challenges, which we'll be able to coordinate and resolve with our partners. If you want to take a gap year and move to option number two, which would be the 45-passenger buses, that's an option as well. So just wanted to lay that out with a little bit more detail. I know we... it was a lot to cover there in the first meeting. We didn't have a chance to go into the specifics here on the EV buses.
Do you have a question?
I do.
Go ahead.
But Krim's here to answer all the questions, so.
So this is for... this has to do with the 2027 and 2035 mandates. What's the consequences of not meeting the mandate? In other words, if it's 2036 and you've still got a diesel bus, what happens? Is it a loss of state aid? Is it a sternly worded letter? I mean, I can imagine that there's not going to be... you know, there's going to... a lot of schools are not going to be compliant, and I'm wondering if we have any sense of what the consequences of non-compliance are.
The answer is, we don't have a clue on that one. Speculative, I would say, would have... the State Department wouldn't aid a bus that doesn't comply. That's my honest opinion, but we have no idea what consequences would be at this time.
Thank you.
My experience has been, it's on the funding side, right? To the extent that they may either withhold until such time that you show some good faith, you know, effort or provide some explanation in terms of why you're going to be able to meet the dates, if those dates remain fixed. It may be a decreased aid percentage. It may be that they provide you, you know, zero aid on a... but it usually comes in terms of ramifications on your state aid.
Okay. I didn't know if that was written into the mandate already or anything like that.
No. Not that I saw.
There's nothing.
Not that I'm aware of.
But we started our transition ahead of that legislation, right? I mean, we're not... we didn't start buying new buses in response to that mandate in the first place.
Thank you.
With the option one, which includes getting the seventh EV bus, and remind me, there was another... it was getting something else, too.
It would be two four-by-four school vehicles.
Two four-by-four vehicles.
Yes.
Could you remind me, if we did that, and that would put us at that 500... about that 530,000 mark, which is lower than where our bus propositions kind of have been over the past five years or so. why wouldn't we add on some of the buses that are in, I think it's option three, which is looking for the, I think, five 70-passenger buses to 45 and to eight-passenger buses? I'm just trying to figure out, like, is there... if we went ahead with the seventh EV bus, would there be a reason not to also get a couple of the other buses so that we're still kind of in the same line in terms of financing?
So the short answer would be, any diesel purchases you make now will affect us on the back end towards the wall that the mandate creates. So we want to be really careful.
That 2035?
So we very well could probably order the two midsize with very little impact because it would just add two more to the, I think it's like 34, 35. That is a possibility, but like I said, we want to be careful on any diesel purchases moving forward until we have some clarity on the mandate.
All three options are still billed on those 2027, 2035 mandates.
Sure.
So if you want to be speculative about, you know, the feasibility of those being implemented in their current form, we have... that translates into some proportional flexibility on the actual bus proposition that you're doing as well.
Okay. All right. And the other just question I had is, do you have any... given some of the changes in the technology, do you have any concerns with going ahead with putting, under the bond project, putting those additional chargers in? Could we be in a situation where we're putting chargers in that won't work?
So it's not so much a matter of working, it's about whether or not they would work the best, right? Because... and we just found this information in terms of the possible change Tuesday or Wednesday of last week. So that was just to... it was actually to an organic conversation that we were having, based on the utilization that Proterra was looking on, the EV buses that we were using. Because I think they were expecting not as many miles being driven on our fleet, but they aren't being driven that many miles because of the way the grant program is structured in the communities and pathways and routing that we had to do. So one of the things I suggested on our call yesterday with them was like, all right, Proterra, you really sort of need to look at what our mileage use is on regular routing and base your decision on charging on that side, not a very small subset of EV buses that do not, you know, represent our traditional routing. So we're going to give them some information, but I do have some concerns about outlaying capital costs and adding to our capital assets, the technology that could be more efficient based on, you know, better analysis. So we'll continue to coordinate with Delta and the other partners and see if we can refine that a little bit better.
Okay.
So just to follow up on that, so right now, the chargers that are included in the bond project is compatible with the seven EV bus or the new generation that Thomasville Buses is coming out with. It was an issue with their recommended charger for the Level 2, which is the wall chargers that we have now. It isn't compatible, but the Level 3s that are in the bond project are.
Okay. I just wanted to get kind of a show of hands of how many people had questions. I'm conscious... okay. I would recommend, given that it's about five to nine, if everyone's okay with it, if we take just a couple minutes to excuse our PIG students so that they can go home, and then we'll come back and ask our questions. So if we could take a brief recess. Okay.
But assume they wanted to.
I mean, you're welcome to stay.
So, what's that, the reduction? I don't know what it's like. Hold on a second. The reduction is in. Because they figured we've subsidized that bus? So, that's our bus?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's not.
Well, I think what they, so there were some issues, like selling the buses. They were like five years ago.
Correct.
They were getting money from them. So, they were basically selling.
Double digits.
Because they were getting basically the full 60% from the state. And they were selling at such a high cost, they were getting 60%. But I mean, like, they're basically never paying the buses.
It's not the whole fifth grade, is it? Isn't it just like a class?
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, from the state, I get it.
We sold 30 buses, they gave them, not five, right? There should be some part of it. But I can feel like, if you want to do it as like a gradual, like, if you sell, you know, if you sell them within the first five years of the year, yeah, we're going to mail you for full 60%.
Waiting again.
Wait five to 10 years, maybe it's only 50%. Wait after 10 years.
Fair enough.
All right. We're all back. If we can reconvene, thank you for taking that short break so we could let our students head home. Now, I know, I saw a couple of people raise their hands that they had questions. John, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I just want to know, you know, the different options. One, there's one bus, two replaces, two buses, three replaces, seven buses. What are these different options? What are the implications with our replacement schedule long-term? Or for the future, you know, I mean, if we replace seven, if we go option three, replace seven, that's obviously significant if we go one, it's only one. What does that do to the upcoming years?
So, I'm going to talk, and if the mandates, like I said, are in place and there's no change. So, if you get two diesel buses this year, the year before the mandate takes place, instead of having to replace seven buses, you would have to replace nine because we will have a total of nine diesel buses, the remainder of our fleet, due for replacement at that time. If you get the five buses, it increases that number, I believe, to like 11 or 12. I think it was like 11 or 12. So, any diesel purchases now will have the impact in the last year before the mandate takes place.
And if we do the one electric, does that maybe divide more electric between now and then? Or does that not have any impact?
It, for the purposes of our fleet replacement, it has no impact.
Yes.
That's why this year is sort of your breather year, if you're not doing that in 2027 or 2035.
Thank you.
Bob, do you have questions?
Nope.
Meredith?
Um, no.
Catherine?
One question I just wanted to ask here was, I know that, and first of all, let me just take a step back. I want to just thank you both again because we're early adopters. We've hit bumps in this road and I just really appreciate both your staff's willingness to work through it, the constant contact with the vendors and just, you know, continuing to work out some of these kinks because this is going to, I mean, this, it, on the one hand, it happens with any new technology and on the other hand, it's incredibly disruptive. So, thank you for working through it. I'm excited about the possibility though, and so one of the things I'm wondering, you were talking about, you know, different, different kind of frameworks that can set us up for more success in the future, charge management being one of those things. There were, there probably, I'm going to guess, are some other things that would be helpful down the road. And I'm wondering, are we keeping in touch with NYSERDA, with the authority who has been providing funding for things like this, giving them that feedback so that the authority can have a sense when it is funding additional districts, when it goes to spend the Bond Act money, when it goes to spend the IRA money, when it goes to spend the other funding for EV buses that it's moving across the state? It just seems like a tremendous opportunity to give them the feedback that like, hey, it's great to help support the buses and also there's these other pieces that come along with it. So, I'm wondering if we've had those conversations or if we can have that dialogue with the authority.
So, as part of the mandate, NYSERDA was charged to develop a framework for the rest of the state and they created a stakeholders committee. I am a member of that stakeholders committee. We are having actually our fourth meeting and probably at the end of the month.
Great.
So, during those meetings, I have been sharing concerns, challenges, positive things as well. And we're also looking to set up a meeting with NYSERDA within the next couple of weeks also to have additional conversations about the project here in Bethlehem.
Awesome. Thank you so much for leading on that, I appreciate it. Also, appreciate you all working with the technology vendors to try and get them to collaborate and make it easy for our parents as far as the communication goes. I really, really appreciate that, so thank you.
I have a few questions. With regards to the charging issues, did that impact the bus drivers being able to take those buses out for their daily runs? Did they have any issues getting back from the long runs with it being charged? Like, did we have to go out and get them?
So, we have a threshold set in transportation to not deploy a bus if it's below a certain level of charge. Also, if they are out on the route and they experience a situation where they don't feel that there's enough charge left to finish their route, we have procedures in place to ensure that the route continues. Yes, we've had some minimal disruption on that, but as a whole, it has not been that big of an issue.
So, also with qualifying for grants, I know Catherine talks a lot about, you know, what are we doing to make sure that we're getting that revenue source? Do we, because I think we qualify because a lot of other districts weren't looking for those grants at the time when we were, because we were one of the first districts to do that. Do we feel that we will not be at the receiving end of some of the funding sources because we're a wealthier school district? So, will that impact, like, what we're going to get on the $443,000 buses? Do we have any idea?
The short answer is, for the previous opportunities, yes, we were impacted due to our status with our socioeconomic status. Moving forward, we don't know what those metrics are going to be to determine awards. The large funding opportunity that just passed from the EPA, it was lottery-based, but they did prioritize tribal and inner-city school districts. We, our application was accepted, but we were wait-listed along with 90 other New York State school districts.
So, with that being said, because I was doing my quick mental math, if we had a full bus, of 70 buses, you know, in our dream world, at $73,000 a battery replacement schedule, because we'd at least have them in one replacement schedule, I would think, that's a half a million dollars, right, in battery costs? If my math is accurate. I'm just worried about the funding revenue. That's where I'm going with this. It's not that I don't want to be green, because I totally want to be green. The students are really, they push it, they're aware of it, and I think we would be setting, for example, if we don't. But at the same time, I have significant concerns with the issues that we have. We don't know the funding source. We're going into a down cycle on the budget over the next few years. So, we're going to have this expensive bus proposition with the cost of the buses. I just, I don't see how that we can support that or sustain it without having concrete information from the state and that, you know, I open that up to everybody here.
Is the, can I just clarify, with the battery replacement? You had indicated that it's $73,000, right, and the battery life is eight years? But I thought you said that the cost to replace the battery wouldn't be worth the value of the bus at that point. Is that correct or did I mishear that?
Yes. So, the bus was approximately, I think, $19,000 when we sold a like-model bus last year.
Yep.
So, you would basically be putting $73,000 into a $20,000 bus.
So, you wouldn't, you wouldn't replace the battery? Right?
I mean.
Are we talking about the EV or the diesel? The diesel? Yeah, the diesel is $19,000 for the battery, right?
No, no. I was just trying to give a comparison of what that bus is normal, what a bus is normally worth at eight years.
At eight years. A diesel bus is.
A diesel bus is worth at eight years. Right now, we don't know what the value of an eight-year-old EV bus is. The bus manufacturers have not been able to project what that would be.
Thank you.
It could be less because of the battery.
And just one clarifying note on the eight-year time period for the battery. That's the warranty life, the warranty expect, or coverage for the battery. In each of those years, the warranty coverage is associated towards like a tiered system that at year one, you know, we guarantee that the battery will maintain 90%. Year two at 80%. So, it's not that at the end of year eight, you know, like, all right, well, that's it, you know? It's, it's not that the battery will die although we.
It doesn't stop working, doesn't it?
Right. It's, it's out of warranty at that point. So, but it's out of warranty if something were to be associated with the battery at that point in time, then you're at a crossroads. You're, you replace the battery, you try to sell to someone else that maybe wants to replace the battery because their financial condition is such that that's more palatable than maybe getting a new EV. Like, there's a couple of different dynamics here. And we're several years out before even really getting a baseline in terms of what that market looks like, what the demand is and the like.
And the only other comment I had was for Proposition 3, is that we just got rid of 30 buses and we sold the salvage because we were too far ahead on our cycle. So, I'm just, when I look at number three, I'm thinking to myself, we just got rid of 30 buses. Why are we buying seven more however many are on number three? So, I would just caution the board to really look at that last one on the replacement because we were way ahead on where we.
So, just to explain why we have to purchase buses each year, it's to even out the purchases of the buses. So, if you deferred, and this will apply next year when we go up for nine buses. If you don't buy nine buses, you're still going to have to buy that nine bus, those nine buses will just be compressed. So, you risk the chances of deferring and then you may have a proposition that's double that amount. So, right now, it's scheduled to be about 4 million. You'll be looking at an $8 million proposition next year.
I understand. I just, we had 30 buses, so that's a lot of buses. And they were under like 60,000 miles and I think we just need to be cautious. So, that's all. I get the whole replacement cycle.
Now, I know we do need to make a decision by our next meeting, correct?
Yes, and that's really just tied in terms of making sure that the language is buttoned up by council's office in time for advertising on April 1st. So, there's 45 days between the budget vote and the legal ad has to be out. And that is also includes the appropriate language for the bus proposition. Now, some of this is relatively boilerplate that, you know, we, whatever you want to pick and choose in terms of your replacement schedule and type, we can work with council's office in putting that in so you have some option to add that March 15th meeting. So, but I will need some lead time just to board me in control.
I think it might be helpful to, if board members are comfortable sort of sharing where their, where their thoughts are at this point, because we do need to make a decision by the next meeting. And that way, we know whether or not there's more questions that we need answers, need answered by John and Karam. So, I don't know if anyone.
It's two options or one with the selection?
They were.
We presented three options, but, you know, they were just options. I mean, you can combine or.
We can mix and match.
So, we're really, really one option to go in.
So, you have, at the next meeting, there will be a board action to actually adopt what goes forward with the bus proposition. So, it can be any, one of these are variation of them, but one is correct.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Willow, you look like you had.
Oh, I just, I, I feel like maybe I missed why the first option, why we needed additional options. I mean, I think we, it was a different board makeup, but we sort of decided we would buy at least one a year. And I'm not hearing a reason not to, so I, maybe I missed why the other two options. So, I think absent hearing something else, I would support the first one.
Catherine, did you want to?
I agree.
I'm option two, just because we haven't had a full year to assess a full year with the electric buses and based on the continuous changes in the technology, I think it would be prudent to maybe have a gap year before we purchase more electric buses.
I would agree with that for the same reasons. The technology seems to be changing. We were early adopters and that's a good thing for a lot of reasons. I think the downside to that is that things change. And we see that already with the, with the charging technology. And my understanding is that even with that, we can call it a gap year, a rest, or whatever we want, that we still would be on pace to meet the 2035 deadline, assuming that doesn't change as well.
One bus is more easily accommodated over the vehicle replacement plan as opposed to in the out years where you have more buses slated for replacement. So, whether it's nine EV buses or 10 EV buses in 2024, 2025, if you were to sort of move it, you're able to absorb that a little more easily as opposed to if you were to try to take a gap year when there's a nine-bus replacement.
Sure.
Again, what you're trying to do is minimize that whipsaw swing of bus proposition that is going to impact that service for the next five years.
Thank you. I mean, I guess the bottom line is I would support option two.
Catherine, you have a question?
Just a quick question. We're talking about, because you mentioned the technology and the need to adjust, what's going to be the cost for switching out the wall-charging connections for the new generation bus? So, you were saying that the bus we have.
So, we bought all seven chargers.
We bought all seven chargers.
Delta's, at no cost to the district, is going to swap out the old charger for the charger that we work with bus number seven.
So, even though there are technology changes, there is no cost impact and the provider is taking that on?
In this particular instance, yes.
Right, for the four, if we were to buy a seventh bus?
Yes.
Correct. So, if we bought the seventh bus, we have the technology, it is already paid for.
If we presently have, we can get.
Well, yeah, yeah, but it is already paid. Sorry, sorry, sorry. The, it exists for us and it is already paid for.
Meredith, do you have any thoughts?
I would support option one, buying the seventh EV, just for the reasons stated. I haven't heard any reason why we should not move forward in the direction we've been moving forward. Additionally, you know, I, I understand the concerns about coming up on the back end. If, right now, we have the 2035 mandate, I'm going to assume, you know, that we're moving forward with that, that that's going to continue. So, I think it'd be prudent to continue on that path.
John, any thoughts?
I'd be more prone to option two. We have another bus coming. Let's see how that, how that one goes. We have the ability to see what the time happens, see what actually comes in writing from the state on penalties, dates, see if that changes and just kind of take a year to reprieve.
Which bus were you referring to that's coming?
The six bus hasn't come yet.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay.
And that's going to be, that's, is that also out for the existing runs?
We don't have enough present.
No, no, no. Sorry, is that one part of the NYSERDA grant that was for the runs that were approved because they were in non-attainment areas for Clean Air?
No.
So, that could be used for regular runs?
It can be used anywhere.
Thank you.
That was the one that was from last year. It's just taken a year to get here. I mean, it hasn't come yet, so.
No, no, I was just trying to get, I was just trying to get an understanding of which ones.
That's a good point, too.
We're, I'm sorry. We're, I'm sorry.
Is there any issue with that? Getting, like, are we going to have issues once we start trying to get more buses?
That's on also, I don't know. Supply chain has really affected the vendors. So they're predicting that it's going to ease up in the next couple of years, so maybe the timing will work out for us. But right now, it's been taking about a year.
I mean, you have supply chain issues, then you have also on the flip side, increased demand as well. So I think they were saying that they were rolling roughly 40 or some buses off the line a day, but, you know, it's a big state, both municipal and school districts looking for EV technology.
I mean, I'm inclined to go with option one. You know, I wasn't sure at first, but I think it sounds to me like a lot of the technology issues have, have been worked out or resolved in terms of the, you know, the, the training and, and sort of the, the charge management and some of it, you know, what we've, the lessons that we've learned from the buses that we have, we will obviously apply to the buses that are coming. But, you know, I'm thinking two things. One is that, you know, we had tremendous community support for this initiative. And I think it was, as I think it might have been Willow said, that, you know, putting aside the 2035 mandate, you know, we were, this was a, a project we wanted to implement even before that happened, to try to add one a year. So, you know, if that deadline gets extended, then we can continue at a slower, you know, at a slower pace. And based on finances and, and supply and demand. But I think we will have the, we have the charging capacity for the seventh bus, and it sounds to me that we should just continue forward with, with where we're at. So that's kind of where I'm at right now.
How much funding are we getting for this bus?
68%.
68%.
$112,000. But that may, again, is spread out over 12 years as opposed to five. So you're, you're still realizing 68% of the value, but it's over a longer period of time.
Right, so annually, you're getting.
And the, the 12 years is, 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 it's an eight-year warranty and the 12-year, and still a 12-year lifecycle estimation.
In terms of presently, today, the state aid reimbursement schedules for 12 years. They may revise that, given some of these issues in terms of timing and replacement schedules, battery life expectancy and warranties, like, that may change, but as, as of today, the replacement schedules, the state aid schedule is 12.
And it's state aid that determines those schedules?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Magna.
So coincidentally, that 12 years coincides with our local fleet replacement schedule. And basically, you can sell the bus earlier, it's just that you won't get your reimbursement until the 12-year point.
Do we know if they can last 12 years or, like, comparative to diesel? Like, what are we expecting?
We're not expecting any differences. Like I said, the only caveat is, is the eight-year battery warranty where it puts you in that situation, year nine to year 12.
Last little question, do we know what the cost is to recycle the batteries or disposal or whatever their plan is to manage those?
That's not been determined as of yet. The vendor is still looking at options on what will become of those batteries. There are, there's some speculation about using them for like solar farms, to store capacity. There, there's some talk about that that's a really hot market for used EV batteries, like for cars. So there, there, there are some things in the works, but nothing, nothing in stone.
Do you have any other thoughts or questions?
Just, can we, I don't know if you can present, like, kind of a schedule of where we are financially on the buses? How much it will cost us for, to do the one or two a year? Are we just going to do one a year for now? Like, what is?
We've got the replacement schedule, right?
Yeah, and the, the estimated cost is included in the replacement schedule that you were providing.
Right, right, yeah. I just don't know how we're going to.
And I think some of it is going to depend on, you know, if that deadline gets pushed, how much, I mean, it's going to depend on some of those unknowns.
But are you planning on, are we planning on, I can't remember, are we planning on picking up the number of electric buses that we're going to put in the replacement versus the diesel? Because if we are and we aren't getting the funding, we're talking like one or two buses for the cost of like eight buses.
Well, if we, if that 2035 deadline stays, then we'll have to do that.
But until then, just one?
Well, no, in the replacement plan, Karam is going to.
So, so once again, the, the decision to go one bus this year, one bus, well, one bus last year, one bus this year was based upon our infrastructure. We didn't want to buy buses in advance of infrastructure that wasn't already in place.
So next year, we're going to have a full infrastructure with the buses that we have. We'll have seven charging stations.
We'll have seven charging. If you go, if the board adopts a prop with the seven EV bus, those roll chargers on the backside of the transportation load would have a bus in each stall for, for charging. The 24, 25 prop, which is presently slated for nine EV buses, based on the current replacement plan and the dates that we have presently available, would be part of the bond, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the charging associated with the bond project.
Yes.
And then next year, we're looking at a $4 million price tag for.
At roughly, based on what we know today in terms of cost, that we'll be building an escalator a little bit, and we say 435,000 at nine, get you roughly, you know, 4.3, 4.4, which is, it's significantly more than what we've been budgeting and incurring in terms of debt service on our bus propositions.
It's possible it could go down.
So do we have, so, sorry, going, taking a moment on process, do we have a determination to move forward with proposition based on the first proposal here?
We certainly can make a decision tonight if people feel like that's what they would like to do. I don't know if anybody wants to just, wants to sit on it until.
I think you have a majority with number one.
If we want to do an official vote next, at our next meeting, because we are currently pretty split, you know, if people want to think about this between now and our next meeting, I think it'd probably be better if we waited for a vote because we are split.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with that as far as process. I think it would make sense to do it that way at the next meeting.
We'll prepare the languages.
Yeah.
I wanted to, I'll present it to the board for further discussion. I don't expect that it would be significantly any different other than the number of buses, what type of buses we dealt with the dollar amount, and whatever state aid component, but we can start that process tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Karam. Thanks.
I think you.
John, any? John, I think you had a couple more slides. I don't know if you.
You can't get me up there. Sure.
Like, where's he going?
All right, so a brief recap as of March 1st, 2023, where we stand, sort of a comparison of expenditures and revenues. Baseline as of February 15th showed an initial gap of $719,000. Transportation had requested a telematics specialist at salary and fringe of roughly $68,000. Information and technology had additions of approximately $549,000 that was associated with the Security Operations Center, some hardware and software upgrades that the district is pursuing, some additional apps for parents, faculty, and the, the student body, as well as some two FTEs that are one-time ones to address some training, transition of institutional knowledge for anticipated retirees in the division. Mr. Keys had provided his summary this evening, had an addition of roughly $29,000. And our Director of Operations and Maintenance provided a $15,000 increase associated with some forward thinking on addressing flare-ups or pandemic-related items of 15,000. It roughly puts the increase at $1,379,000, which is just under 2% in terms of a tax increase proposed as of tonight. Next slide, please. Just a reminder to the public that on May 16th, voters will have the opportunity to elect three members of the Board of Education for three-year terms, expiring on June 30th, 2026. Nominating petitions were made available at the District Clerk Brittany Barrett's office on February 15th, and petitions continue to be available up until the day that they are due on April 17th at, close of business at 5:00. Christine Beck, Holly Dellenbach, and Meredith Moriarty are currently the individuals, those seats are currently the ones open for election. Quick outline in terms of, I'm not sure that this is a good slide or a bad slide, because when you look at it, it's like, oh, look, May 16th, it's almost here. And then like, wow, we got a lot of work to do between now and May 16th. March 15th is the next scheduled Board of Education meeting where we'll focus on instructional programs. Again, I will, we'll work internally here to make sure that the board has an opportunity to review and consider two bus proposition proposals for consideration and vote on March 15th. April 5th will be additional discussion and decision and ultimately adoption of a tentative budget for consideration by the public. May 3rd is a public hearing on the proposed budget. May 8th is the meet the candidates night for those individuals interested in seeking office for the Board of Election. And ultimately, May 16th is the budget vote, with polls open 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Bethlehem Central High School. I guess the last slide.
All right, now you're done. It's the actual last slide?
I did. I think so.
Any other questions for John? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen.
Next on our agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors with us tonight who'd like to address the board on an agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone. Item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items one through five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through eight. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? D, other action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items one through four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors with us tonight who'd like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone.
Hi, good evening. I'm Gina Orfleet, and I'm here just to say hello from the high school PTO and invite the board and any listeners and the students that left us to attend tomorrow night, where the high school PTO is collaborating with the middle school PTO and the SAD Club, which I'm very impressed with Sarah, the president of the SAD Club. We have a presentation on drugs, alcohol, and vaping, presented by Tracy Mance, who is with the Albany County Sheriff's Department. I believe the middle school went to go to their, their choices program frequently back in the day, and Tracy was ahead of that. And I want to thank Superintendent Monroe for her statement and, and the Communications Department for sharing our content and inviting people, and the Technology Department, who's going to be so kind to record our presentation tomorrow. And we're looking forward to being in the auditorium, so you're welcome to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I was asked if the presentation was going to be recorded. Where can people find that recording?
Will probably be shared via E West through Aspen, and then on our social media pages, which the middle school's private, but the high school one is called Parents of Bethlehem Parents, Parents of High, Bethlehem Parents of High School Students, I can get it. We don't have an official page. But I'm sure with the Communication Department's memorial, we'll be able to share the E West that way, too.
Okay, thank you, Gina.
You're welcome.
Item eight, future meetings and events. On March 6th at 6:30, we have a policy committee meeting here at the high school. Our next regular board meeting is on March 15th, anticipating executive session at 6:00 and reconvening to open session at 7:00. And then our meeting after that is on April 5th, again, anticipating executive session at 6:00 and reconvening on public session at 7:00. So you know, need to go back into executive session. Could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.